January 3rd, it's time for our regular scheduled board meeting. Tonight I've asked Eric Musgrove to open us with the indication in the pledge if you'd stand.
Our Father in Heaven, we come here today to thank for all the wonderful blessings of life that you have so richly bestowed upon us. Father, we thank for this new year that we've had after this holiday season. We pray that everyone has had a good holiday season and as we start this new year, we pray that you'll be with the commissioners as they make the choices which will bring honor and glory to you and to this county. Be with those who are suffering, those who are sick, those who are less fortunate. Be with our first responders and those in the military. Pray that you will keep them safe, return the homeless their missions are accomplished. Be with the board tonight as they look to do the business of this county. Pray everything will be done in accordance with you. St. John's Day we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Ledge allegiance to the good flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice of all. All right, first item up is consent agenda. We have items one through seven, any that need to be pulled for discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd simply like to point out that we sent out a corrected number seven with a new number on it.
Yes, sir.
Sent it out to everyone, so I just want to point out that's the one that you'll be considering.
All right, any questions or anything that needs to be pulled? Hear none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right, moving on to general business, item number eight, I'll discuss possible board action, any issues associated with wastewater plant at I-75 or 136, anything much hairs?
No, sir.
Item number nine was additional agenda items, there's one additional agenda item, discuss possible board action interlocal agreement for call sharing services of chief security officer. This is something we've been working on.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'd like to add an additional agenda item.
All right.
Deals with satisfaction of a judgment lien in one of the foreclosure actions that are, have been filed in the county.
Is that a ship lien?
This one's not particularly.
Okay.
Straight up judgment.
All right, we got two additional agenda items. The first one, the interlocal agreement for the call sharing services, that's the IT board that we had the workshop on with the school board a while back. It's kind of changed a little bit since we have the workshop with the school board and become just a part-time employee for the county, a position, and we're going to creation of the IT board to oversee that position, and that's what this interlocal agreement does between the Sheriff's Department, the Clerk's Office, property appraiser, and the Board of County Commissioners. Any questions from anybody?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, since I'm new to the board and kind of new to this, what we're doing here in this agreement, I would feel more comfortable if I could have a week or so. That's not going to cause an issue in making a decision.
You say you want a week or so to look over it?
Well, I'm, we'll be back here in a week and a half, I'm saying. I just, I would feel more comfortable making that decision for.
Okay, um, no, I'll, I'd like for us to move forward with it as soon as we can. I was wanting to get it done in the boarding place before the end of January and have employee hired by then, but if, if you need a little more time to do it, I don't have a problem honoring that, but while we're here tonight, if anybody has any questions, would they, they want to discuss a little more or need any more detail on it?
Might be just good to, you know, reiterate what you were doing, maybe a little more detail.
Yeah, with, with moving, the way the county's moving with the IT, you have ITs under, or property appraiser's office, clerk, the sheriff, fire EMS, the Board of County Commissioners, and everybody's sharing the same server. And right now we have just more people putting into it and the oversight is, I don't know the right word to use for it, but we want a central group that's overseeing everybody instead of a pocket here, a pocket here, a pocket here, and that's what we've been working on, probably what, last year and a half, Mr. Baker, year? I mean, you got, you got David here from IT, Sean, if you got any questions for anybody of a little better detail than what I can give you, we can call them up if y'all want to discuss it any, anymore.
Is everybody that's going in the agreement agreeing to go be part of it?
As far as I know, I haven't talked to anybody. I've talked to Lamar, he's had, sheriffs indicated that he was, Mr. Baker has. We've had multiple meetings between the sheriff, the chairman, the clerk of the property appraiser, going over and setting up this committee. We had a joint workshop, I don't know, but what was that joint workshop before our budget hearings?
It was right before.
Right before, and then after we come out of the joint workshop with the school board, we budgeted $150,000 for this, for this move, and we were hoping that everything would be in place back in October 1, so that we could just move forward with it in that new budget year, but with the, it was going to be a joint effort between us and the school board, but the way everything worked out with the school board of us being the primary employer of the position and them kind of being a subcontract of that employee, that we were going to wind up assuming their liability as well, and that was something that we decided we didn't want to do, was to assume our liability as well as their liability, so it kind of dissolved as far as having the joint effort, and so they've, they're doing their same thing they've been doing now, and then we've moved forward with this, this, this interlocal, and pretty much it's the same thing we're doing now. We have a chief officer now, I don't know, I think it's the same title, that oversees IT services and the security of it, but it answers, right now it's just solely on the responsibility of the clerk's office, but he's providing security for the Sheriff's Department, the Board of County Commissioners, Lamar's office, and what this is doing is just taking a representative from each of those constitutional offices and putting them on a board, so that that board oversees the security officer that's responsible for the security, rather than it just falling directly under the clerk. Everybody that's, he's providing security to has a say in who's hired and the direction that that office moves in, so that it's kind of shared responsibility amongst everybody that he's providing services to, rather than it just falling under, under one office.
Is, is there, was there a way that this person was chosen, or what, or this company, I guess is what I'm saying, or?
Well, this isn't an agreement with a particular company or anyone right now. All this is.
This is just trying to get everybody together, I understand that.
The, the current company that does business with the county now is what, they've been providing the IT services for the school board and the county for 20-plus years.
So it's the same one that does it for the school board?
Yes.
I, I don't, I don't, I would just, like I say, if we can.
Were you talking, what, 10 more days before our next meeting?
Yeah.
Something like that, I'm out.
And I, I understand that y'all, you all have been working on it a good while, I would just like to be a little more familiar with it, and I know this was kind of put together, and as Mr. Harris always says, if I represent the people and if anybody's got any heartburn with it, I'd like to give them opportunity to tell me about it.
Yeah, well, one of the, like I said, it's something we're doing now, and I know it's $150,000, but we currently, that, a good portion of that's what we're budgeting in anyway, even without doing this, and on top of that, that doesn't count the hours now that the property appraiser, the property appraiser's office has not been figured in to the rate that we're paying the consultant, because they're just now, this year, getting a new computer system where they're going to be coming onboard with us, and so that, that's all increasing the workload of what we've, what we, what we haven't been paying for, so. Mr. Hancock, do you have something?
Yes, I just had a question, because this is my first chance to.
Who are you?
Oh, Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road, Live Oak, Duane County. I want to just make sure I understand that basically, between the school board, the Board of County Commissioners, sheriff, clerk's office, and the property appraiser, y'all are now creating another board.
School board originally was a part of it.
Okay.
But they are no longer a part of it. That was the original discussions when we had a joint workshop with them.
So they're out.
They're out.
Everybody else is, is in.
Right.
But do you still have this, a local group that you're appointing that's going to supervise this individual?
Yes, that's what this is. This is an interlocal agreement between four constitutional offices to provide a representative to this board that oversee the individual, group, or individual that is providing the IT security, that's going to represent their office.
It's, I'm just confused over why do we need another layer of supervision?
What layer are you referring to? You talking about the IT security?
Y'all are going to appoint someone to serve, and Lamar will appoint someone, the sheriff will appoint someone, and then, and the clerk will appoint someone.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't understand the need for another layer of supervision.
All right, so you got four offices that are working in the IT field, they got their own computer systems and different things, so as he's providing security to each one of them through the server that we have at the courthouse, what this group, I'm just going to use the clerk's office for example, if they find something that they're wanting to download in that's going to maybe help them with a project that they've got going on, but they're not talking to us or we're not talking to them, they may download something onto their server that opens a back door for somebody to come in that may harm our system. So by having a committee, before he can do anything, or before the sheriff does anything, before Lamar does anything, everything runs back to that committee, to that security officer that they're talking to, everybody's on the same page of what systems we're going in, what, just whatever they're gonna, software they're going to use to make sure that it talks to the system, just for an example, the time clock system that was bought six years ago that may work now or may not work, I'm not sure, because it didn't talk to the system. So it's to try to, to do away with getting something that don't work and trying to fix it down the road, write another system to fix that system, because you got so many different departments that are doing different pieces of it, but yet nobody, left hand's not talking to the right hand, nobody knows what the other one's doing, so you got to have somewhere that it all comes back together, so that everybody's on the same page. The other thing is, is bulk purchasing, and that we hope to come back with an agreement with the school board, that if the school board's going out for 500 printers or 500 laptops, and we need 30 laptops or 100 laptops, that we can bid them all together as a, and get a bulk rate on them, rather than trying to buy, you know, 30 here, 30 there, so that everybody's talking and that we're getting bulk rate purchasing, the best deal for the county and for the school board that we can get, but if we don't have a committee where they meet and talk, then we don't know that they're ordering 100 laptops, or we don't know that they're ordering 500 printers, they don't know that we are, and we don't have no way to bid it out and get the best rate, so that's, that's what it's for.
Well, I understand the need for coordination, but I just don't think that you need another layer, you're going to, this commission will designate someone.
We could designate an employee and hire him, but.
No, 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 you will designate someone for this committee.
Correct.
Okay, Lamar will, the sheriff will, Barry will, et cetera. What's wrong, you know, if something is going on, you know, with the clerk's office, for example, it's going to go through their IT people to start with, that's who Barry would probably appoint, I'm pretty sure, because those are the person, or individuals that would be most knowledgeable. Who the board would appoint, I don't know, but before anything goes on, you would need to be talking anyway, you're creating a layer that hopefully is going to coordinate all of this information and then make a decision. You can't, they can't spend the money till y'all approve it.
Correct.
But to me, it's an additional layer. I really don't understand, I understand the need for coordination, but adding another committee that will meet once every six months?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I could make a comment, Mr. Hancock, this is actually a natural progression of something that started when we formed the committee eight months ago to start talking about all of the equipment that everyone is purchasing.
Right.
If we had done this at that time, we wouldn't be doing it now.
Right.
But what we realized in the very first meeting.
We, we actually formed a informal committee to go over a lot of it.
And all of these same parties were invited to participate in that committee because we recognize that our technology needs are growing with or without a committee or any type of oversight, and we need some type of centralized oversight on what's actually going on with the security piece of this. I'm trying to abbreviate everything that the chairman just said. The reality is that the security component, all of the party's departments are growing in technology despite this, we're just taking off, all of us are, and most of it out of absolute necessity, because the entities that we deal with, with the state require it, they're all going paperless, and they're forcing us to go paperless, and it's going to take us a long time to get there, but all of this requires software and all types of approaches to get where ultimately they're requiring us to go. The interaction between the departments and agencies requires someone in this type of position to kind of serve as an umbrella over the security piece of it, but in addition to that, this is simply a recognition of the funding responsibility that each of these agencies has. Now, the board could say, well, we're just going to pay for all of it, the board could say they're going to pay for all of it, but that isn't really a true reflection of the cost that is borne by each department, so the, what the board is doing is funding each of these agencies, their proportionate share of the expense as a pass-through, if you will, that then pays for this position, pay for their portion of the services that are being demanded as a result of what all of us are doing. And I don't know if that simplified it, but the reality is, we're not adding another layer of anything. All of these people that might serve on this committee already exist.
Oh, yeah.
They're just going to agree that they're going to meet on an as-needed basis and participate in selecting a big vendor to buy all the laptops or whatever else we're all going to need, and this IT security person will sit in on that and participate as well, but it's simply a reflection of.
The IT security position is not a new position, that, that is currently being funded and provided now.
But I think, Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, for me, the board would represent communication for one and accountability for the other, all in one, I mean, it's just a tool or a mouthpiece, that each one of those department heads would communicate with one another and be accountable to one another, and, and also hold this gentleman accountable, or lady, whoever.
Could we, you accomplish the same thing if you were to say, we're going to do this, we're going, this will be the person, the IT person for the county, and his duties and responsibility include the purchasing and everything else. No department can do anything with their system until it's cleared by him. You pay, if Lamar wants to use him for his GIS mapping, that's fine, then you bill Lamar for his portion, or the clerk, or the sheriff, et cetera. I mean, would that not work?
Yeah, but it's more than just that, Mr. Hancock, I believe it was the city of Atlanta had their entire system shut down through the city through an AC, wasn't it an AC outlet that the city of Atlanta was shut down from? A wire, a wireless connection through a wall AC thermometer that nobody ever thought about, maintenance said, you know what, let's put these in, no, this hand wasn't talking to this hand, next thing you know, their complete IT, IT system is shut down and held ransom because nobody thought that anybody would ever hack them through a dagum AC outlet, and that's the purpose of coming in and having each department sit down and talk on what they're going to do, because IT is moving so fast that we don't think anything about it, but there's people out there that are breaking into it and hacking it every day.
So if, if building department wants to change thermostats, they got to go through this IT person.
If they're going to put a wireless one in there that's going to tap into the internet system, yes, sir.
Doesn't have to be a wireless, it could be a wired system too.
I'm talking about when I say wired, that you can sit there and come on your telephone and tap into it and change thermostat before you get here, that's what I mean by that.
Yeah, but you can still get hacked even if you're using a USB cable, get your internet. I mean, there are still ways to do it, I mean, I'm not an IT person or anything else.
Well, I understand your concern, we're kind of getting off in the weeds on it, I understand that you, you don't think that we need the extra level of it, but we've, I'm going to just, we're going to have to agree to disagree for right now.
It's okay.
I agree with you, we got a lot of boards, we all sit on them and go to them, I can promise you.
Yeah, I would just, this is my first opportunity to, to look at it.
Sure.
In any detail, and as you were mentioning, let everyone know what the change is from the previous version.
The only change was that it was a consultant and now it's a part-time employee, and kind of what you're leading on would have been a full-time employee, and I don't know if we need a full-time employee yet, so, but I got Mr. Baker wanting to speak behind you, so.
Okay.
We allowed you your 15 minutes.
He did good, on his, his agenda item change, number seven, they called me and let me know that what was going on.
I sent you an email, but you didn't read it, I can't make you read it, I can send it to you.
Well, if you send it the day of the meeting, I don't know.
I'll send it when I got it.
My emails.
I'll send it when I got it, just saying.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say also, it's not, it's not even the interaction, it's the purpose of this position is not just the interaction between all of our, all of our local agencies, but also our, our working with the other, our outside agents.
Oh, yeah.
It's the, it's a judicial system, as well as Sam has to work with FDLE and FBI and all the other different agencies, and each one of these agencies have their own requirements, and so they need someone to coordinate those requirements, so that, like, like with our judicial system, we have redaction and all, all these different software that we have to take and handle, and so, you know, it's where y'all have agencies also that you have to work with, and you also have to meet their compliance.
Yeah, you mentioned something, the one, one of the reasons it changed from a consultant to a part-time position was FDLE changed their requirement, saying that you could no longer hire a consultant to work on, what was it, the Lasso?
Right.
Their, their system, that it had to be an employee, so that's why we had to go back and redo it from a consultant to an employee, because of something that the state of Florida kicked in and said consultant can no longer do it, so that's why it was pulled the last time and changed. It's a little deeper than just, I may not be getting it explained very well, because I'm not very articulate when it comes to explaining stuff sometimes, but it's a little deeper than just wanting an oversight board, just, there's.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. The, under section five of the funding, just one clarification, that this fiscal year, three entities are funding, and next fiscal year will be four.
Yeah, when we went, when we entered into the budget workshops this year, if you'll remember, the property appraiser's office was using a different IT service.
Yes.
And we funded them for this year to upgrade their system, so we didn't put any money in there additional for their IT, but they will be coming onboard, so I anticipate that in, next year's budget workshops will be readdressing that, the funding, and it will include the property appraiser's office in the funding, but I didn't, being that we're in the middle of the year and we were trying to get this done now, I didn't want to go try to kick a budget number in for them, but something that we didn't budget for. Any other questions?
I don't have anything, I just, I appreciate some of the insight, I mean, it was good for me just to listen to that little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, you haven't been here, and it's kind of, like I say, this has developed over probably the last year and a half, so.
Well, I want you to be very clear that, or I want to be very clear that I, I'm not standing here in the way of it, I just want to make an informed decision, because I have, just like all the rest of us, we have people to answer to, and if I tell them I voted on something and I didn't know what I voted, I mean, it's kind of like what we've done in school, you check yes or no, sometimes, a lot of times you check the wrong one, but I'm, I'm, I'm understanding it pretty quickly, and maybe I'll sit down with Mr. Baker and maybe the sheriff and bring me on up to speed on it, and I'll feel 100%, we'll move ahead with what we need to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Harris, if you would, we are going to go ahead and just put that on the next agenda just as it is.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Mr. Privat, you said you had something with a lien?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, board, if you recall, back in October, I came before you on one of the ship cases where we had an outstanding judgment lien that was in a criminal case, and we were able to be paid off as that foreclosure matter was moving forward. Well, we have a similar thing that's just happened this afternoon at 3:30, we got a request, there are three outstanding, the county has been made a part of a foreclosure action, and it's, the reason we were made as a party is we hold three judgments for criminal, you know, the state attorney liens and the public defender liens against two different people, and their home is being foreclosed upon, and as a result, we get made a party, and they have to satisfy our lien whenever they get to the end of the foreclosure process, so what we, I got approached this afternoon, that if we would, the amount of the judgments are $2,983, if you add them all up, and they were all entered in between February and July of 2017, interest calculated through today on those judgments is $178.31. They offered today that if we would just take the amount of the, the judgments, 2,983, that they would pay us before the end of the week, because the first hearing that will be occurring in the foreclosure action will occur next week. I would encourage you to go ahead and take that and waive the 178, $178 of interest, because if you pay me to go to the hearing next week, it'll be more than $178, and, so that I can go ahead and give them a satisfaction of these three particular liens.
Any questions for Mr. Privat? Do y'all have any? Nah, I'm in favor of going ahead and accepting it.
Second.
What was that amount?
2,983.
So, Mr. Richardson? Move to accept the 2,983 and waive the interest?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. That was all the additional agenda items, it's time we open up Florida public comments and concerns, anyone wishing to speak, make their way to the podium. Yes, ma'am, we got there a little, well, actually not as quick as I thought we would, but we got there.
I'm Charlene Moss, 5984 Wiggins Road, Live Oak, Florida, 32060. It's been a long time since my husband Oscar and I have been here. I'm going to, Bo was, he's our neighbor, he was saying I need to come back, so I, even though I haven't been here in quite a while, I feel like it's my responsibility to be a good citizen of this county and this nation, so I'm going to work hard at trying to come to all the meetings. Excuse me for being nervous, I'm. Excuse me for being nervous, I'm not a public speaker, you don't have to worry about your jobs. Mainly, I wanted to say thank you for all the hard work that you do. It's not easy, being a public servant, we appreciate it very much. I know the burnout must be hard too, although Ricky, he's been a long time because he remembers me from way back. It's challenging, we appreciate all of your time, your efforts, your experiences, and your devotion, and we hope that you'll keep up the good work, every one of you. Thank you to all the citizens and the guests and the rest of us who do show up. There are a lot of empty seats. I wish we had more responsible people that would come. Some of us can't because we have other obligations, but as a citizen, it's our obligation to make sure that we understand what's going on, we stay on top of it. And we don't just write in the rant and raves and complain and get upset and not know what's going on, and not understand fully what it's all about, and come and be educated and be a good citizen. I want to thank Bo for standing up here and giving you all hell all the time. I know he's got the best interests at heart, and he's doing excellent. And I just wanted to give him a shout out and say thanks. And thank you to his wife, although she's not here right now, for prodding him or helping him to do better. As a, coming back for the first time in quite a while, I wanted to just tell everybody thank you. We do appreciate it, even though we're not very many of us, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are you still Bo Hancock?
Yes, I'm still.
Okay, all right.
She kind of took all my thunder. But there is one thing that is irritating from a taxpayer, citizen, and taxpayer in a member of the community that people in other, my fellow taxpayers, if you will, will stay at home or write a comment, mostly rants, very few raves, in the paper, and they're published. And they need to start attending the meetings. When y'all are running for office, you're out campaigning, and you're listening to the people. You get received, once you're elected, you receive the phone calls and the letters and different things, emails. Those are all well and good. But if you start seeing some of those same faces again, and again, and again, and again, you're either going to get awful tired of it, or you might start listening. And I would encourage all my fellow taxpayers, start coming to the meetings. If you want to know what's going on, this is the place to come and find out. You can ask the questions, and generally, you're going to get an answer. You might not like it, but you'll at least find out what's going on and what the background is. And I'm just, it's the beginning of the year, it's a good time to try and get people interested in coming out and participating in their local government. Not too many people are going to leave Swanee County and travel to Washington and talk to Congress, or their congressmen or women, or their senators. Most of them couldn't tell you who their state representative is. In this district, it's Neil Dunn, or his congressional representative. But you need to get out and find out who your elected officials are, whether you voted for them or not. If they're sitting up here or have been elected, those are the people that can help you get the answers that you need or answer your questions. But you have to ask them, and you have to educate yourself and find out what's going on. There's a lot of people in this county right now that does not know that, about the Economic Development Director. I don't understand how they wouldn't, but they don't know that we even have one. And then the next question is, why do we need one for? But it's because they're not, have not been educated, they don't know what's going on in their county. And then when something does come up, then they're all up in arms over it. We don't need that. Well, if you had been coming, you would then find out what the need was and the reasons behind it. So I would encourage the people in Swanee County to start coming to meetings. Times were changed several years ago to having both meetings at night so more people could come. It worked real good for.
It worked for a while.
About six months, we had more people. And now all of a sudden, it's back to the way it was when the meetings were during the day. So y'all made it available to them, you can't make them come. I would encourage them to start coming, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? I will say, Mr. Hancock, controversy drives the attendance, I think, sometimes. And we've been fortunate that the boards worked very well together over the last couple of years. And I think not seeing them fight, they don't get to see a good show, and that's what they want. Some people want a good show.
They're going to get one.
Well, they can get one every now and then. I can fight with you.
Take it easy, man, take it easy.
I won't back down.
I'm just picking at you.
We can get the attendance up pretty quick. No. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we'll move on to administrative comments. Mr. Harris, you got anything?
Just quickly, the meeting with our legislature, state legislators will be January 14, City Hall, from 9 until 11. I'll be preparing a short list, I think. You know, our list that we've presented has been pretty consistent with Small County Coalition over the last eight years. What I believe we want to emphasize is the same thing that we've talked about before, is the continuation of an increase in funding for the small county transportation programs, road programs. That and continuing the funding for economic development grants. So unless the board wants to add something else to it, in fact, you should have gotten a copy of the Small County Coalition printout that just came out. It has the list of priorities to be presented to legislators as well.
What time did you say that was?
9 to 11, January 14, at Live Oak City Hall.
Y'all have any priorities that y'all wish to add that we, to talk about that day?
Commissioner Stapleton already told me that he wants all of his stuff listed at the top. So we've already programmed that into the presentation.
I think we need to at least mention.
We are going to increase the attendance, aren't we?
The River Task Force, maybe just to talk about that.
Yeah. I think we do need to start echoing that a little more when we talk to them. It don't seem to be getting any traction in Tallahassee, which is not affecting anybody, but just right through the Swanee River Basin, so.
And hopefully, the 18th will be that next meeting for that board, and hopefully, something good will come out of that. But we're going to meet with these guys before that, so.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
All right, moving on to board members' requests and comments. Mr. Hale, you have anything for us?
I do not, just wish everybody a happy new year. The holidays were good to everyone, look forward to this year.
Mr. Stapleton?
No, I do not, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson?
Just echo what Commissioner Hale said, happy new year to everyone. Hope you have a safe and a productive one.
Ms. Fleming?
I'd echo the same thing. I would like to echo what Mr. Hancock has said and Ms. Moss. I know it had been a while since I saw them, her and her husband, and it's so good to see you back this year. We look to have a prosperous new year 2019, and we hope it continue on from there. You know, I won't say it, I won't say it. I don't have anything yet.
All right, I'll echo the same thing as far as wishing everybody a happy new year. Hope you all had a good, safe holidays. Moving on into the new year, I want to welcome our newest member of our team, Mr. Jimmy Norris. When was your first day, yesterday, day before? We're looking forward.
About ready for an update, aren't we?
I was going to say, where's our update?
Well, that's why if he started two days ago, I figured he'd have one for us.
He's got something going by now.
Well, we're excited about things to come, welcome.
I prefer the fruit orange over peach. There you go. Coin that term up here.
If no one else has anything, just need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All approve, say aye. Thank you all for coming out.